Presentation. Our next presentation is a special session by our guest of honor, Dr. Hamad Haseen. Dr. Hamad Haseen is a consultant histopathologist in North Bristol NHS Trust UK. And his presentation is entitled Approach to Malignant Pleomorphic Undifferentiated Neoplasms.
Good afternoon. Today I'll talk about an approach to malignant pliomorphic undifferentiated neoplasms. Pliomorphic benign and intermediate malignant tumors. As well, pliomorphic dermal sarcoma will not be discussed. Some entities like with ipsiloid morphology also will not be discussed. Here is a list for the benign and intermediate malignant pliomorphic tumors. A clinical pathologic approach is mandated, including clinical information, history, location, laboratory and imaging finding, biopsy interpretation, using ancillary studies like immuno and molecular. Malignant pliomorphic tumors have many faces. One of them is pliomorphic genuine sarcoma, pliomorphic genuine sarcoma, pliomorphic non-sarcoma, a dedifferentiated neoplasm, heterologous dedifferentiated component, or a UBS. Frequent histologic patterns are seen for pliomorphic tumors described as UBS-like, and the most common patterns are spindle story four, previously known as MFH-like. You can see highly pliomorphic spindle cells with large cells and nuclei, and have more than three times variation in cell size, bizarre shaped cells, and even you could find easily mitosis on this power. Episilioid pattern could be clear or rapdoid. With marked pliomorphism, in this presentation, some but not all episilioid entities will be discussed as a part of the pliomorphic tumors. John cell reach pattern where we can see many osteoclast-like multinucleated John cells. Inflammatory pattern reaching lymphocytes or granulocytes or fomihistocites. In this pattern, you should consider hematolymphoid tumors in the differential diagnosis, and I'll briefly touch on this later. Another question, or the first question in the approach to ask, is there any histologic evidence of differentiation? The first entity is a pliomorphic liposarcoma which occurs usually in retroperitoneum. Deep somatics of tissue, twenty-five percent are superficially located in the skin or subcutis. The morphology is UBS-like, any pattern or episilioid. The hallmark histologic finding is it's a pliomorphic lipoplast, even unevacuated or multivacuated. Have this tumor has dysregulation of B fifty-three, RB one, or NF one. Adipofyllin immunohistochemistry could be helpful, although it's not highly specific. There's no MDM two amplification. The episilioid variant can be misinterpreted as metastatic carcinoma, in particular adrenocortical or RCC, which neoplastic cells can be similar to lipoplast or have lipid content. Here we can see a typical pliomorphic lipoplast with indented bizarre shaped nuclei and fat vacuoles in the cytoplasm. Here's the episilioid variant where it could mimic adrenocortical carcinoma, for example. There are some isoinophilic high line globules. It's a soft sign, but it may be a clue to consider pliomorphic liposarcoma or to search for lipoplasts. Other entity is called the megzoide pliomorphic liposarcoma. This entity shows a mixture of megzoide liposarcoma and the pliomorphic liposarcoma. It lacks characteristic DDIT three fusion in megzoide liposarcoma or MDM two amplification in the well-differentiated liposarcoma. It affects children and young adult. It has a predilection for mediastinum, deeply seated other sites. Immunohistochemistry, it's positive for many markers. While lacking MDM two and DDIT three, it's positive also for B fifty-three and CD thirty-four with loss of RB one gene. It has a less complex karyotypes than the pliomorphic liposarcoma, including the mono allelic loss of chromosome thirteen Q, RB one gene. It has a high rate of recurrence and metastasis, and this tumor is highly aggressive. Here we can see a megzoide, somewhat megzoite stroma with scattered pliomorphic lipoplast and some carovilliner vessels. Pliomorphic lipoplast may be very scarce. In breast, we have to consider malignant filodes and the metastatic carcinoma if we have something lysis. Screening with MDM two to exclude dedifferentiated liposarcoma, especially in retroperitoneum. Pliomorphic liposarcoma in the children and young adults are nearly nonexistent. Therefore, megzoide pliomorphic liposarcoma is to be considered in these settings. The third entity is extraskeletal osteosarcoma. It occurs in extremities. Hallmark is osteoid production. It's positive for SABB two, could be follow, could follows a history of irradiation. Metaplastic bone may be found in other tumor, like in a differential or forming a shell in another tumor called ossifying fibromegzoite tumor. The most common differential diagnosis is myocytes, ossificans. It's a benign entity, and we have to exclude primary bone osteosarcoma with extension into soft tissue. Here we can see malignant osteoid production with diffuse reaction to SABB two. We have to consider the site. Osteosarcoma can represent with a heterologous, can represent as a heterologous differentiation in another malignant tumor like mixed malaria or a brist metaplastic carcinoma. We have to check radiology for relation with underlying bone. A UBS-like tumor lacking osteoid with intra-tumoral hyalinization is likely to be an extraskeletal osteosarcoma. Calcium stain in the hyalinized area, and SABB two positivity around this hyalinized area could help in diagnosis. The distinction between UBS and extraskeletal osteosarcoma can be somewhat arbitrary. The presence of osseous endocrine element in the pseudocapsule or dividing fibrous septa favors a pliomorphic sarcoma, however, others propose that any neoplastic osteoid or bone in a pliomorphic sarcoma warrants a diagnosis of osteosarcoma, no matter how it's focal. Second question, is there any evidence of differentiation using the immunohistochemistry? We have lineage differentiation, myofibrill plastic line with a smooth muscle actin in a tram-like pattern. We have a magenic differentiation. We have episelial differentiation, neural vascular melanocytic form melanoma and B coma. Magenic differentiation is a generic tear to involve any evidence of a smooth or skeletal muscle differentiation. Partial magenic differentiation or incomplete magenic phenotype is defined by focal expression of magenic markers or diffuse expression of only one marker in the absence of others. Tumors with partial magenic differentiation have a higher metastatic potential than UBS and lower than leomysarcoma. At the molecular level, they are indistinguishable from UBS. Leomagenic differentiation and rapdomagenic differentiation, including these markers, H caldozmen specifically for leomagenic, and you have to use a specific clone, rapdo, a high specific clone. Rapdomagenic magenin is positive for magenin and myD one. Other markers like calponin and transgelen can be used in specific stitch. The common panel to confirm or classify magenic differentiation can include SMA, dismen, H caldozmen, magenin, and myD one, and to consider using a clone with high specificity for H caldozmen. Pliomorphic leomysarcoma usually harbor a lower grade leomysarcoma component on H and E as a clue. It lacks MDM two expression. SMA has a diffuse cytoplasmic pattern, not the tram-like pattern. It's positive for dismen, negative H caldozmen in most of somatic one, and the positive, and the negative dismen, positive H caldozmen for vascular origin one. But this is not a rule, it's just a notice. Molecular subtypes of soft tissue, leomysarcoma depend on the differentiation. Well differentiated with myocardium amplification, myocardium gene amplification and upregulated muscle marker, while dedifferentiated subtype with dystrophin gene deletion and reduction of magenic marker. This image show fascicular intersecting pattern of spindle cells with isoinophilic fibrillary cytoplasm and the plum cigar shape. This is a high-grade sarcoma, but still have the fascicular pattern. Here, the image show partial loss of the fascicular pattern with some attenuated poorly formed fascicles. While here, we can see overt pliomorphism with complete loss of fascicular pattern. Some consider this as a dedifferentiated leomysarcoma. The three images show a range of differentiation in a high-grade leomysarcoma. Pliomorphic rapdomysarcoma is extremely rare and also extremely rare to find the cross-stration. You will find large polygonal racket-like cells as a diagnostic clue or to think about. Dismen, magenin, and myD one usually restricted to multifocal group of cells. Magenic markers can be negative on a core biopsy. SMA and the H caldozmen are negative. It shouldn't have embryonal or alveolar component. Genomic profile is similar to UBS. Here we can see the characteristic racket-like cells or rapdoid cells. Pilsen bedfall. Specific clone of plab show cross-reactivity with magenic tumor, and mainly the rapdomysarcoma one, you have to know your clone. Magenic differentiation can be heterologous or a sign of dedifferentiation in another more complex, high-grade tumor, and can be overlooked on a core biopsy. In uterine tumor, it's usually a part of mixed malaria or an adenocarcoma with rapdomyplastic differentiation. Both leomysarcoma and rapdomysarcoma can express keratin and EMA in fifty percent of cases. Pliomorphic rapdomysarcoma is extremely rare in adult and vanishingly rare in pediatric. MDM two can be expressed in this entity without underlying gene amplification. You have to watch out for the intrab degenerated and regenerating myocytes. They are magenin positive and could deceive you in another infiltrating tumor. The clue is linear arrangement, tumor and the tumor periphery, the positivity in the tumor periphery, and you have to compare with H and E. Pliomorphic leomysarcoma, estrogen receptor cannot, can be expressed in soft tissue, so it cannot differentiate, differentiated from the gynecologic one. H caldozmen is frequently expressed in GIST, and also you have to use a clone with high specificity. GIST is frequent in stomach, while leomysarcoma is frequent in colon and esophagus. Sarcomatoid and pliomorphic carcinoma. The site, clinical radiologic data, and the history are crucial to know, like history of radiation, previous confirmed carcinoma should be the first and last differential in any site known for carcinoma, like hidden neck, pancreas, GI, lung, breast. The presence of cohesive cluster with clear-cut episelial differentiation or an incisor component is a clue. Episelial marker expression and transcription factor expression could help, like PAX eight, CDX two. Here, we can see spindle cell sarcomas adjacent early invasive and the incisorous clymic cell carcinoma. While here, we can see cohesive clusters of episilioid cells intermingled with the tumor, with a high-grade spindle tumor. Here it's hypercellular with highly pliomorphic cells, lacking evidence of episelial differentiation. B forty, B forty is positive in this tumor. Post-irradiation sarcoma had a long latent period, median is eleven years to develop. So a pliomorphic spindle cell tumor arising in an irradiated site for a previous carcinoma after a short period like one year is usually a recurrent carcinoma. The most common post-irradiation sarcoma are angiosarcoma and UBS. Some carcinoma can recover after radiotherapy with long periods as sarcomatoid hidden neck mimicking a post-irradiation sarcoma. B sixty-three can be seen in post-irradiation sarcoma, while B forty might have more specificity. A smoking molecular signature could be helpful in hidden neck and lung tumors to differentiate pliomorphic carcinoma from sarcomas, other sarcomas in difficult cases. Pattern of metastasis should be considered before diagnosis. For instance, a lung mass, a dominant lung mass in radiology with regional lymphadenopathy, contralateral lung brain bone and adrenal metastasis. In the presence of a pliomorphic morphology without episarial marker expression and a molecular surface unavailable, you have to bear in mind that this could be or still a carcinoma, not a sarcoma because of the pattern of metastasis. Malignant B coma is a, has a striking female predilection, soft tissue and in soft tissue and viscera, co-express melanocytic marker and the magenic markers. Genetically, three mutually exclusive categories, tuberous skellosis, one and two altered, TFE three translocated and the follicular mutated B coma. Malignant B coma show B fifty-three, retinal blastoma one, and the ATRX alteration. TFE three translocated B coma show strong diffuse TFE three, focal SMA, and the negative melanA. Here we can see a pliomorphic episilioid cell with diffuse expression of HMB forty five, lacking S one hundred. You should differentiate this from melanoma by using myoid marker. TFE three, you have to use also a clone with high specificity, and the expression should be diffuse in the strong in TFE three translocated cases. Focal weak expression can be seen in many tumors, and there are some reported positivity in many other tumors using a clone of low specificity, like ten percent of liposarcoma, and the more than ninety percent of solitary fibrous tumor and the dismined showed expression of TFA three with this clone. Malignant prefer nerve sheaths. The history and the clinical tumor appear to arise from a preferred nerve or a pre-existing benign nerve sheath tumor. Usually a neurofibroma or areas of typical histologic features of MBNST should be considered. Overt pliomorphism can be seen in conventional and episilioid subtypes. Pliomorphic conventional MBNST is positive focally or even absent neural marker with trimisolated histone three loss. Pliomorphic episilioid malignant prefer nerve sheaths is diffusely positive for S one hundred and socsten neural marker, have loss of INI one in fifty percent of cases and the intact trimisolated histone three. Malignant prefer nerve sheaths with heterologous differentiation could be partial or rarely complete. It's a highly malignant aggressive tumor. It's called a malignant Triton. Rapdomagenic markers are positive with loss of trimisolated histone three. Molecular neurofibromin one loss. Differential with melanoma. Neurofibromin one loss can be seen in eighty-eight percent of neurofibromatosis associated malignant prefer nerve sheaths and malignant Triton, and near fifty percent of sporadic MBNST. This loss can be seen with, in mezzo-fibro sarcoma, pliomorphic liposarcoma, leomysarcoma, and UBS. Here we can see loss of trimisolated histone three with internal control in vessels. Here a heterologous rapdomagenic differentiation, focal and diffuse, yet not complete. Episilioid sarcoma occurs in young to middle adult, most commonly in distal and proximal extremities, highly aggressive tumor. Exhibit severe atibia and pliomorphous in proximal type and rarely in classic type. Characteristically show episelial marker expression with CK seven, five, six, and EMA. INI lost in most of cases. CD thirty-four in fifty percent, ERG in forty percent using an indeterminus clone only, not the C terminus one, negative to CD thirty-one and the fly one, lack any other line of differentiation. Here we can see highly pliomorphic episilioid tumor with rapdoid morphology with loss of INI and the intact expression in inflammatory cells. Differential was poorly and the undifferentiated carcinoma. Usually carcinoma occur in old age, organ-based, clinical and radiologically should be suspected. Episilioid sarcoma show pattern of metastasis to peripheral lymph node, inguinal or axillary according to the involved limb. INIs frequently lost in many carcinoma with rapdoid or undifferentiated morphology. We have to bear this in mind. CA one hundred twenty-five is positive in tumor and then serum. And this is, shouldn't be confused with gynecologic malignancy like ovarian, which have high CA one twenty-five in serum or even in the tumor immunohistochemistry. Other question is, could this be a dedifferentiation? Dedifferentiated liposarcoma could have a homologous or a heterologous component. A well-differentiated liposarcoma component could be seen microscopically, macroscopically, or radiologically. The most common site is retroperitoneum. Could happen in any other sites like spermatic cord. Mitotic count five percent high-power field, not valid, but sure sign. Some dedifferentiated component can have less than five percent, but five is sure sign. Amplification of MDM two and CDK four. B fifty-three is rare in this tumor, not like the other tumors. Other amplifications are involved that are involved in dedifferentiated, and the characteristically, they are present in two-thirds of dedifferentiated cases, not in well-differentiated one. On resection, the dedifferentiated component has to be seen macroscopically, and if it is small, like one to two centimeter, it's called the minimal differentiation and warrants resampling because you will find more on resampling. This MDM two overexpression is seen. Liposarcoma is the most common diagnosis in retroperitoneal area, whatever the morphology, and because it can show heterologous differentiation. MDM two immunohistochemistry, it is a good screening test to trash cases for FISH. MDM two and the statex are closely situated on chromosome twelve Q. Tumors with MDM two gene can express statex due to concurrent statex amplification. So well-differentiated liposarcoma and dedifferentiated liposarcoma can express statex mainly in fifteen percent of cases. MDM two can be seen in other malignant pliomorphic tumors like pliomorphic rapdomysarcoma, mezzo-fibro sarcoma, entimal sarcoma, and the malignant prefer nerve. Another entity, dedifferentiated solitary fibrous tumor, show an abrupt transition from typical areas of solitary fibrous tumor to high-grade component lacking expression of markers with a very high risk of metastasis. Dedifferentiation is more commonly de novo than in recurrence. Loss of CD thirty-four is seen in fifty percent, and decreased or absence of statex expression can be seen, although NAP two statex fusion is retained molecularly. Constant loss of chromosome thirteen and sixteen Q is seen in dedifferentiated component. More generous sampling can reveal as a conventional solitary fibrous tumor component. Here we can see a pliomorphic tumor with hemangoparesitometic vasculature. An abrupt loss of CD thirty-four is seen, denoting dedifferentiation. Also, a dedifferentiated GIST can be seen with a high-grade kit negative component and the loss of histologic characteristic of the primary tumor can occur de novo, or more commonly, post-prolonged TKI treatment due to resistance. Most commonly presents with UBS or heterologous component. It's negative for all GIST markers. Keratin can be focally positive or acquiring a magenic profile. The GIST mutations are always preserved in the dedifferentiated component. CD thirty-four can be preserved, the most, the most preserved marker in dedifferentiated component. Here we can see a pliomorphic episilioid UBS-like neoplasm with loss of CD one hundred seventeen, sparing mast cells as internal control. Here we can see a high-grade pliomorphic tumor with rapdoid morphology and diffuse positive reaction to myD one, denoting heterologous magenic, rapdomagenic differentiation. History of GIST or finding another differentiated component could be helpful. Magenic tumor are rare in gastric site or rarely presenting as a gastric primary. We haven't to rely on H caldozmen because it's positive in GIST and leomysarcoma. Leomysarcoma and rapdomysarcoma in gastric mass in absence of molecular confirmation is better to be descriptively reported as a high-grade malignancy with magenic differentiation, especially in a small biopsy. Dedifferentiated melanoma is defined by the presence of a component lacking the histologic and immunophenotypic features of melanoma. Lack all markers of melanoma can acquire a new immunophenotype, magenic. Characteristically, UV molecular signature can be diagnostic for continuous cases, and molecular events like PRAF or a specific form melanoma can be diagnostically in this tumor. PRAF and the BRIM is, are preserved in fifty percent in dedifferentiated component, as well as MOM one. MOM one is a hematolymphoid marker for plasma cells, but it's usually noted in melanoma. Here we can see a spin, a high-grade spindle neoplasm lacking pan-melanoma cocktail and socsten, and the positive for BRIM. While here we can see an undifferentiated episilioid around tumor positive for dismen and magenic denoting rapdomyplastic differentiation. Positive for Desmond and myogenic, denoting rhabdomyoplastic differentiation. And in the same time, it's positive for BRAV six hundred A mutation, immunohistochemistry, denoting. A mutating, hard pulling a mutation for a melanoma. So in its diagnostic, it could be a diagnostic in a case with a previous history of melanoma or suspected recurrence. De-differentiated melanoma and the heterologous differentiation can be confirmed. With earlier history of melanoma, absence of another genuine primary like an anaplastic carcinoma. Metastatic pattern typical of melanoma spread. Presence of a differentiated component, melanin or. Component positive for melanoma marker socsten. The presence of BRAF, C kit or PRIME positivity. Detection of melanoma compatible gene mutation or UV signature for cases with previous history of continuous melanomas. Pos MBNSD and melanoma can show PRIME positivity and can have NF one mutations. The presence of other BRAF or histone three, trimestated histone three loss. And the clinical finding are are very helpful to differentiate cases with heterologous differentiation. In both malignant peripheral nerve and melanoma. Hematolymphoid tumors. They are usually not strikingly pleomorphic, but some cases can be deceiving. We can use a panel including LCA S one hundred to exclude. Some histiocytic and lymphoma cases or CD forty-three, tax five, CD twenty-one. CD sixty-eight, MOM one for plasma. Lysosome or CD thirty-three for myoid sarcoma to exclude if the tumor has has no. Has no line of, has no detected line of differentiation. Intimal sarcoma is a is a UBS-like one in morphology affecting major vessels and the heart. It's diffusely positive for CD thirty-one, fly one, MDM two, CDK four. Combines feature of angiosarcoma and features of de-differentiated liposarcoma. C kit, C mech and disc steam and it's negative for CD thirty-four and ARG and this is very important. Desmond and CK can be seen fokally, fifty percent of cases has a metastatic disease on presentation. The diagnosis is clinically challenging because most of cases are seen as a thrombath. It has many amplification in MDM two. And mutually exclusive with CD six, CDK six and other amplification, co-amplification like platelet drive the growth factor receptor A. It has a genetic overlap with cardiac undifferentiated UBS, pleomorphic sarcoma. Typical morphology of UBS. Vascular tumor also are not strikingly pleomorphic. But we have to consider the pleomorphic episilioid angiosarcoma and the anaplastic variant of caposi. Clinically, immunosuppression or HIV status, history of radiation for. Angiosarcoma, history of another primary as angiosarcoma could represent a heterologous differentiation in another tumor. Like MBNSD or a germ cell tumor. Immunohistochemistry, ARG one and CD thirty, ARG one mainly is positive diffusely and CD thirty-four. And the HHV aid for caposi sarcoma. Many cases that are reported as a heart or a major vessel angiosarcoma are now. Being recognized as intimal sarcoma, they are negative for ARG one and CD thirty-four cases. And CD thirty-four. A mezzo-fibro sarcoma is a slowly growing sub-continuous mass in limb and trunks and always more superficial. It's undefined with highly infiltrative borders, radiologically appears as having a tail sign. Histologically. It's formed of mezoits, stroma, curvilinear vessels and the multi-nodular architecture with scattered pseudo-lipo last. Immunohistochemistry, no specific line of differentiation, MDM two can be fokally expressed. It present as low-grade and frequently occurs in high-grade. Episilioid variants, always high-grade and difficult in diagnosis. It has three molecular subtypes, including, one of them is including MDM two amplification. Here we can see episilioid cells within a mezoit background. And the market pleomorphism. Here we can see. Curvilinear vessels. And the mezoit stroma. Immunohistochemistry, mezzo-fibro sarcoma can express Desmond, CD thirty-four and the MDM two fokally. A cut-off twenty percent from mezoit areas is usually used to differentiate a high-grade mezzo-fibro sarcoma from a UBS. Although it's arbitrary cut-off and prognostically, both are similar and treated in a similar manner. The clue for diagnosis. Of episilioid and the high-grade, grade three mezzo-fibro sarcoma are the superficial location. Presence of low-grade component, multi-nodular pattern of gross, curvilinear vessels, mezoit changes. Alcian blue positive pseudo-lipo blasts. UBS. Is a diagnosis of exclusion, it's devoid of any line of differentiation, fifteen percent are soft tissue. Of soft tissue sarcoma are UBS, usually represent a de-differentiated form of many tumors. This diagnosis should be made cautiously outside the soft tissue. It's arbitrary whether to include these entities. Under the umbrella of UBS or not, like high-grade, grade three other type fibro sarcoma. High-grade, grade three myofibrill plastic sarcoma and the grade three mezzo-fibro sarcoma. Due to similarities in molecular profile and the prognosis. While others. Have noticed differences in immune profile and histologic. Patterns. Let's summarize. Some points and the question which could be like a stepwise approach to reach a diagnosis. Is it a malignant UBS-like tumor? We have to check clinical radiologic finding in the history. Is there any histologic evidence of metastasis of differentiation? Like presence of osteoid, fascular leomycoceroma differentiation, lipoplast. Low-grade sarcomatous component, melanin, episelial differentiation in form of cluster. Is there any evidence of differentiation using immunohistochemistry? Like myogenic, episelial, vascular. Could this differentiation be a heterologous differentiation? And. And if there is no line of differentiation, could be, could this be a de-differentiation? The clinical will help. Possible de-differentiation in organs and the tumors like GIST in the stomach, melanoma. Solitary fibrous tumor or a sarcomatoid carcinoma or a mixed malaria or carcinoceroma. Or any tumor with dual lineage. You can use some markers to exclude de-differentiation. And to exclude difficult. Tumors like next generation immunohistochemistry. You can use the molecular profile and using molecular signatures like the UV or a smoking signatures or aging signature. Some tumors have many molecular signatures. Finally, if we couldn't find anything, it's UBS and this is a diagnosis of exclusion. We have always considered these seven points while approaching a malignant UBS. It's undifferentiated histology. Doesn't fit any defined entity. If there is a better, a better differentiated component. Focal or minimal, needs generous sampling and scrutinized examination. Earlier history of a certain tumor. We have to confirm the original pathology if like it has a history of carcinoma. Or a melanoma. Absence of another genuine primary and or a concomitant. Lung mass, for example, and adrenal mass with a UBS morphology. This could be a metastasis from the lung carcinoma. Location outside, at sites like are that are unusual for UBS. Like superficial, in axillary, inguinal, visceral, like the digestive system. Unusual multifocal disease or metastatic pattern typical for carcinoma or a melanoma. Or a hematolymphoid neoplasm, a detection of distinctive mutation or a molecular signature. Finally. Thank you and I have to say that I'm very happy for having me today in a place where I enjoyed working. There with all my great appreciated colleagues, thank you very much.